Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our August twenty twenty four council meeting of the city of depot bay. You should call the rule. Councilor Beasley?
Here.
Councilor King?
Here.
Councilor Masella?
Here.
Councilor Wreck?
Here.
Mayor Short?
Here.
Councilor Sovereign?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
Thank you. Um, we've all had a chance to review the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept it as submitted?
I think that motion is accepted submitted.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's going to be a second to um accept the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. So um regarding the backhoe, um small backhoe or equipment, um we did we get three bids for that?
Sole source.
Well, this was a we need to do.
Uh sole uh sole source.
It was what they were repairing it. So this is what kind of like a like for like change. They were repairing our current backhoe, so we had to have a backup. So.
Oh, is that what she's talking about? Because we've got a trackhoe too, isn't it?
I'm I'm talking about the small one. I don't really follow.
There's a trackhoe that.
This this was a new piece of equipment and it was like um ninety nine thousand K. Oh, you're talking about that.
That was the mini excavator.
Yes, that's on the agenda for discussion later.
But that that was used with um sole source, which they do the uh bids.
They get contract pricing through the whatever contract that they work with is usually the Orpin, which is the or procurement. Now, but they they have a contract with it, so we get the contract price. But that's the mini excavator and flambower that's on the agenda for discussion later.
Any other questions?
Just a chance to add a question?
Yes.
Um, the spectrum for charter, it looks like they have two invoices for July for the the community hall. What's can you not understand that?
They're were they true for the community hall or did she identify? We're.
Well, I just wondered if they were identified wrong because it says community hall in her invoice. There's two of them.
Or both of them. So we have spectrum at the wastewater cleaning the plant. It's new and the water treatment tanks, we had to increase the then with the D M L. And in fact, we're actually trying to figure this out. There will probably be a credit on the next one because spectrum is got weird. Yeah, not where billing. So we found out today that they they we're trying to get them all on one count. So Diane's in the process of straightening that out. It's either misidentified and it should be the wastewater infrastructure, or it was a double payment that she's fixing.
Well, they're different payment amounts, so I I assume it's just misclassified.
One of them is one I believe they are because Diane is very um she's watching them and they've been causing problems with their billing of that, so. Everybody's not in.
Yeah, we've got a appointment tomorrow to sit down and straighten them all out.
Yes. So there might you might actually get see an adjustment on the next one where there is a credit for something like that, so.
Yes, great. Um, so I see um about our fuel um prices, and there's uh different invoices, so I assume one's for fuel, regular fuel and one's for diesel. Um, but also we haven't gotten um you know, just the accounts payable, but do we have accounts receivable, how much we're getting from the fuel sales?
I haven't gotten you the accounts receivable, you know, the one I need to provide you guys. I just haven't have a chance to put one together, but I can have it pretty as a September meeting. Um, along with it, you know, I could be um accounts receivable or what they call account activity for the July first of the this new year.
Any other questions? I'm in favor of uh approving the um motion as submitted. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, thank you. And I apologize, um I skipped over the changes and additions to the agenda. I would like to point one change. I would like to put um public comment rather than our shares. Is that the one?
B four, so it's like G in front of F F?
Yep.
Okay.
Deputy, come on up. How are you?
We want to review.
Good. Thank you for a great report.
Hey, you were starting to build this together, so.
Oh, okay.
He just does the work.
Yeah, that's probably more serious than I actually feel, so. Um, any questions on any others right now?
I have a question.
Yes.
Was what the entry report as far as the different cases that you look at, what is MSG and what is message, but what what would that entail?
Um, it could be from a previous case.
Okay.
So a week ago, I talked to someone over there and they wanted to hold me or gather info. Um, they call dispatch. You just dispatch oftentimes, just codes as messages.
Yeah, no, what's it? I was looking at it. There seems to be some addresses that are kind of like called to quite often.
Yeah, because they're uh and there's gonna be more for next month, you'll see. Because depending on what kind of cases, um typical financial type cases, they continue finding things, but they never find anything all at once, so they'll continue to call dispatch, call dispatch, call dispatch, which is that's how I think so.
Um, thank you for this report. It is really good. Um, so one of the things I'm wondering, you do say when it's, you know, outside of um depot bay in general, but there are some places that are classified as depot bay that are actually outside city limits. Is there a way of making a notation of that? Um, you know, those up by a few of them, like Salashan or by um um by Chester's, that's outside city.
Right, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah. Um, there would probably be a way just based off the address. Um, still probably coded as just depot bay because the majority of those, it's a traffic, more likely a traffic type thing. Um, those originate within the city limits of depot bay. Sometimes it takes a while to catch up to it, but also that may be why it's not coded outside.
So if it was something other than traffic that started in in um city limits, we know that um it would be classified as non-depo bay then, right?
Right, yeah, we could definitely, we could figure out a way to make sure that's all the counties that were reporting.
Thank you. You have the agenda?
Yeah, so um last month, we talked to Sergeant Dale about the the um report itself. And again, we have this month a hundred and ninety uh citation, a hundred and ninety incidents that are broken out of the total of two hundred and sixty.
Okay.
So I'm just, again, I'm curious what these other twenty five percent of these incidences are because it it represents one quarter of all of the stuff that you're dealing with that is not showing under the summary at the top of the report that that says, uh, you know, we had twenty eight citations, a hundred and sixty one warnings and a crash, but there were a total of two hundred and sixty things that we did.
Because we're not sending over the entire, okay, yeah. So we used to, you know, I am not hearing that anymore.
Sergeant Dale said that he's not sending over the non-work time, like vacations.
No, no, I think he's talking about the other calls.
It actually says incident.
Yeah, so.
Oh, oh.
So, you know, it's just an entire call list.
Yeah.
Do we not have that?
Well, no, it's been dark all this that I thought. It's the whole chart thing.
Right, so it should be.
No, it's not on page. It's on the page uh.
Page forty four.
Let me let me show you. Um, it's it's.
I just thought Sergeant Dale had said he was gonna break this down so that we, the total incidents that he had were the summary of all of the the ones that were broken down.
It should be, yeah, the total incident should should match the should match everything else, yeah.
So this. This is what he's talking about. So, right, but I was talking about there.
Right.
Right down.
So. Right.
Yeah, all of that.
So, yeah, that should be right below the set.
Yeah, all of this is the detail, yeah.
Yeah, so it should be right below the cover sheet. That's gonna be all the calls that I have broken down.
So you're not, so what you're saying is uh it's not being categorized into these four categories. It's there's there's seventy calls or seventy incidences that don't fit into those four categories.
I'm wondering.
That would be, yeah, that is correct.
Yeah, he wouldn't be counting the messages.
Right, I see what you're saying now.
Yes, the.
So there's gonna be two of you, two hundred and sixty total go down.
There'll be two hundred and sixty live items.
But yes, there's going to be other things in that that are not included on the crash.
Okay, yeah.
I'm sorry. Just because essentially.
Are you are we able to get this in spreadsheet form?
I don't know. I'll have to ask.
If you can just ask Mr. or Sergeant Dale's, that would be awesome. Because I'd like to figure out
Yeah, I know, because.
what those seventy extra, because it represents twenty five percent of the of the incidents. And I'd just like to know what they are.
I know that from our cat system, um it exports to Excel. We can go from one page and click all those calls that you see and that's the export. Actually, that is what we're seeing in Excel spreadsheet.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I couldn't help but notice that the vast majority of these stops resulted in traffic warnings. So I can't even imagine what these twenty eight people were doing that actually got a traffic citation. But.
Typically, they reset the threshold where a warning was not.
Excellent.
Is not gonna get the job done.
At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I think Deputy Elstrom's work so much justifies the research into the municipal court. Because uh if warnings and citations add together, the typical rate would amount to uh almost thirty eight thousand dollars in uh fines. And we're accumulating some research. I sent him some stuff uh last week from Lincoln City. Uh, to me, it looks very positive. I think there's still reservations, but the the city administrator had done it, but uh not that much money is cut off the top to go to state and county authorities. Lincoln City is most of the money. So anyway, thank you very much. Great report. I might echo that on that.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you. You're making a difference out there. Absolutely, it's wonderful.
I'm sorry.
At this table, take public comments, and I know so you have a large group again. Um, if you're here to talk on one subject, I'd like you to running to our rules of the um engagement. If you're all here to speak on one specific subject, I would like you to um appoint a chairperson and you will have five minutes to speak on your subject.
Mayor, could you uh could you uh point out their rule to us?
It's in the council wills to proceed here. Um, and it would be if you all were gonna say the same thing. Right, so but if you're all gonna speak on the same subject but are coming from it different, because we've had cases where we've had a bunch of people pretty much say the same thing. So that's when you want a spokesperson. That's kind of what, so I
They have a minute.
I just communicated what that meant to her.
It'll be three minutes each. So open public comments.
Um, please go in the order that you signed up. My assistant is taking minutes, so uh I want to be able to enter that sheet and say, there you go. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marie McFarland, and I'm from Lincoln City. And we were here about a month ago at one of your council meetings. And we were here because of First Amendment, our concern about what was being done with signage. And after that meeting, we were made aware of the fact that one of your council members was sent a letter about forming us to come in and talk with you. I started Hilltop Patriots, Reeve, almost sixteen months ago. And unfortunately, we are not, unfortunately, we are a group of people who meet and discuss things that are going on in every city in our county because we represent every city in the county. We have members through Walcourt, all the way through Rhodes End, through um Rose Lodge, et cetera. So we go to all of the city councils. You're not the only one. And because of that, we do keep an eye on what is going on here as well as the other towns. And by the way, we have since been in Lincoln City based on signage and the letter that was sent from your council members. We did not, the council member did not form us to come and speak on his behalf or anyone else's. We came because we saw an injustice that was being afforded to be sentenced here.
And who was this letter from?
This letter was from Ms. Wallmer.
There was not a letter. I would like to clarify, probably wasn't a letter. There was a comment that might have been probably inappropriate, but it was not a letter.
Okay.
And it wasn't doing anything but making a comment between me and the city councilor.
But how so?
Of which he constantly apparently shared with this group, which further leads to the uh impression there's a relationship there, which is how the commission affects.
The relationship is not just between you. I'm with the councilors in in Lincoln City because I've been part of that group. So it's not just this city or this group. But the concern we have is that there was a a comment made about the fact that you were following some of the from Lincoln City. Lincoln City's sign ordinance about posting signs for um things such as elections, et cetera.
You have three minutes, right?
Okay.
And and I did I did forget. I didn't say that sign.
Can I reclaim the time that she took?
No, we do.
Uh, I'm sorry. Um, anybody, if you were, are you saying, can you speak again?
No, 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 no. You interrupted. She was interrupted.
Oh, uh, come on, three minutes. My, I already right on it.
I shouldn't have said anything and we shouldn't have engaged. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. One more minute.
Thank you. So basically, we have organized ourselves and we come and we watch what's going on in all the towns. But Lincoln City, they haven't ordered some signs, but it does not address anything with political signs being on people's personal property. They have no right to take those signs down or to request a certain amount of time for the signage. So signage on personal property can be there here in and here out and not be touched. So my comment to you is that we are watching things like this because it's important for our First Amendment rights.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Betty McKean. I'm also from Lincoln County. Um, I was going to say, first of all, nobody could set me up to come testify the last time or this time. That being said, the last time I spoke, it was about illegal unconstitutional ordinance on political signs. Um, you gave a ruling, I gave you a ruling by the Supreme Court, Reed versus Town, five seven six U S one five five two thousand fifteen. I'm sure you all looked it up. Anyway, um today, today I want to read from the from the First Amendment. An act which violates the Constitution has no power and can, of course, neither build up nor tear down. It can neither create new rights or destroy existing ones. It is an empty legislative declaration without force or viability. Therefore, I'm asking you once again to reconsider this ordinance. And again.
Any time, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're still going in order, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to be sure.
It makes it easier to understand my name.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm Cindy Chuho. I live here at depot bay. I've been here since we bought in twenty twelve. Actually, moved here in twenty thirteen and had a business south of the bridge. Uh, and then my husband passed away since then. So I have now purchased property here in depot bay. That was our goal, was to hire here. So I want to be clear on sign signage of uh property because I am on a corner lot uh at Tron's and Southeast Williams. And I do have that whole half acre. So I want to be clear on my signage issue. Uh, we've never had a problem in the past. And if anyone has an issue, I would appreciate them coming to me personally, uh rather than having to come through a legal source of the city because I think that's what neighbors do for each other, is if you're having a problem, you go and talk to each other. So I just want to be clear that um I do have a sign above my property for a political sign. It will not stay there forever. That's not my purpose. Purpose will be until the election's over. And that's how I do summons. And so we've been doing things, I'm doing things myself now. It's called put my big girl pants on and do it myself because my husband's not here to do it for me anymore. And I thank you for your time. I thank you for your service and I look forward to talking to you more.
Thank you. Continue public comments?
Think I'm next, I don't know. I'm next.
Good evening, Mayor and city councilors. My name is Carol Lynn Glenn. I reside in Lincoln City and I pay Lincoln County property taxes. As a private citizen, I come before you this evening to follow up a matter that was brought to my attention following my public testimony to the same governing body last month on July sixteenth. I came to a depot bay city council a month ago in good faith to address council's deliberation on an ordinance regarding placement of temporary signage on private property. The definition of public comment, as outlined in the agenda, does not say that only those who reside inside the township of depot bay may testify, but in fact, the definition of public comment for three uninterrupted minutes provides any person to come forth forth and be heard. That includes all citizens and the general public at large, including activists and lobbyists. The purpose of public testimony is the right of the people to bring awareness to the public regarding matters that may affect them. As the elected legislative body of this town, the people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments they have created. It is the intent of open meetings and public comment that actions be taken openly and that the body's deliberations are open and transparent. It came to my attention that following a meeting last month, the city reporter transmitted an email, it's an email. I have a copy of it here too, if anyone needs to see it, to this body, under the impression that myself and others have come to depot bay at council members' request to protest sign ordinance outside our jurisdiction. First, I want the public record to reflect that no one asked me to come last month or today. This is an insult and it is disrespectful inference by a city employee. I am wondering what would compel this type of communication, for what purpose? Public comment is the cornerstone of transparency and communication with our elected officials. There should never be any effort to center, discourage, or squelch the input of citizens in a public forum. It's my understanding that there is another meeting taking place in two days, this Thursday, to discuss how to implement new taxes. I would encourage anyone listening to public comment tonight or the press to pay attention to this meeting, as it can be viewed online via Zoom or in person. Also, I have to wonder if more signs should be placed on private property alerting the citizens in depot bay that their elected body is considering raising more taxes on them than already stretched thin populists. I will end with Luke twelve two three. Everything that is hidden will be shown and everything that is secret will be made known. What you have said in the dark will be heard in the light. Thank you.
No.
Hello, my name is Gail Muller. I'm a resident of Oregon my whole entire life. Our constitutional republic was set up with elected representatives such as yourselves who execute duties under constraints specifically detailed in our Bill of Rights. Thank goodness, Thomas Jefferson and James Madison challenged the rest of the creators of the Constitution to specify individual rights in the Bill of Rights. Their opposition in entailed refusing to ratify the Constitution until Madison penned it. By responding to the colonists' concerns and overreach of a centralized federalist government, Madison created guarantees against future government abuses of elected officials. I, for one, am grateful for that and all of the individual protections of speech, religion, freedom of the press, and right of a fair trial. This is what makes our constitutional republic unique in the world's history. So I understand you have pledged your allegiance to our republic and have signed an oath to uphold our constitution. My expectation is that you will keep all these above points in mind and you won't infringe on our free government's speech rights going forward. Thank you.
Any others?
Is it public comment?
Yes.
Did we go online and what's on the, okay.
Is that?
Never well since I've been here.
Okay. What did you ask?
Did did you not wanna?
Different subject.
Oh, uh, is it for just general public comment or just for an agenda item?
Agenda item.
Okay, then usually you want to wait till the agenda, but you you're welcome to do it now.
I'll do it then.
Oh, I'm ready. Any other?
Yes.
Still in public comment?
Yes.
On a new subject? Sure, that's one. Okay, thank you.
My name is Emily Dehoff. Uh, I am the president of Friends of Lincoln County Animals, but I'm here this evening on behalf of the depot bay Lincoln City Privilege Club.
Oh, Emily, pardon me, you actually have an agenda item now?
We do.
Yes, you're um you're under, I I told Jack that you would be right under the appointment of the parks person.
Yeah, it's.
Okay.
I'll look it up.
I'll wait until we're all of you together.
If you want to grab a copy of the agenda over on the corner, I will show you where it is.
It's on the reverse.
I revised it, told him I was putting it in there, which was my fault if she wasn't in there. They were actually.
Any others? Okay, we'll head on to many reports then. Do you want to start with the emergency board?
Um, yes, I.
Councilor Lee, do you appreciate the board's page, 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 committee issue article, uh, was about uh emergency affairs and what we're all are concerned about, but that was a hard one, thank you. Um, emergency affairs committee is taking the cash information that we received when we had filled the rings kind of center and we're gapping it to the needs of depot bay. It's really a big project and we'll be um doing it for a couple of months. I also created content for our city webpage and I'll submit it to the moment for her review. Our next meeting is on September the ninth, two thousand twenty four, at four A M. More importantly, I want to emphasize that the city council members are always welcome to attend our emergency affairs meetings. We welcome your input. Let's not, however, when one of our council members came to talk to us concerned that we were paying more than we should for the Bowman property. He noted that he had a place that he had been that had been used or considered. But when asked how they would have known, maybe asked about, asked him how he would have known about this, but he never mentioned. He said that someone should have asked him. Did how would members have known about the place he had if he had not mentioned it to somebody? When asked if he could give a uh different uh committee proposal, he said he did not know if he would since it wasn't obviously important for the committee to ask about it. And that the committee had an agenda and that agenda was to spend spend city money. One of the committee members was offended and felt that this was a, that this visit was real more than an attack on what the committee was doing. At the end, I asked him if he was willing to share information about this and those properties, as the as the committee did not want to spend money as unnecessarily. He said that he would think about it. As I previously explained, the beauty of the Bowman property is that it's wet and emergency when people need to know where to go, post office location is easily recognizable. The property can easily be made into a larger cash containment location. The large site would not only fit the city's needs, but we would potentially share it with real more and encourage them to place a cash there. We could potentially use that space that was left for community garden. The ninety three thousand one hundred dollar prize for the property was land with an asset value from limited funding in two thousand twenty four. All city councilors that were in budget discussions, the price of the Bowman property was discussed and approved by the budget committee and adopted in the city's budget. At no time would this person come forward with another land opportunity or suggestion. The budget committee approved two thousand and two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars for a acquisition. The one hundred thousand dollars was for the Bowman property. Since this committee's inception, we've been criticizing a line. Some of the criticism has been awful and is not. And yet no one is stepping up to do anything. I've always tried to complicate thirty questions as to the people. But I draw the line when the emergency affairs committee feels that they're being attacked. As previously mentioned, the council are open to hidden readings, offered advice, and get criticized as long as perceived as being destructive. We are unpay volunteers. We've built a work to try and help the city of depot bay prepare and respond to emergencies. Thank you. and respond to emergencies. Thank you.
Any questions for?
Yeah, that's deeply concerning. Yeah, I'm sorry that happened. I've attended your meetings before and as a speaker, I'm sort of, we're being a sit in the audience that we're not supposed to say anything. I thought this was a little, is not correct.
Well, there's always a time for you to have, or give up a comment.
We have it done.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joyce. Appreciate your report and I always appreciate your frankness. I would say this, that one of the problems that we have in the public forum is that criticism is sometimes viewed as an attack. And my personal opinion about this job that we have, as volunteers in the, in the public sector, is that you have to have the part to do this. And also, I share some of the concerns of whoever this was. You didn't mention who it was. I'm not even sure. Can you tell us who it was?
I have a third one too.
I share some of those concerns. And I think all of this needs robust discussion and back and forth. I still have questions about this.
That's not what I would like to hear.
Yeah.
Sometimes our committee.
Well, can I ask another question about that too? Because one of the things that worries me, see, I think that this emergency preparation should be a constant subject, maybe even an agenda item. Because we have two city councilors on this committee who are deeply involved on it and we have other councilors who are very interested in it, like myself. And I know Councilwoman Stella has talked about this stuff. And this idea of city councilors, you know, arguing it out in a committee meeting someplace else, isn't that in violation of open meetings rules?
Absolutely not.
Well, I thought having three councilors.
It all comes to council.
Or me?
It's all come, if everything comes to council, that happens in that meeting. I'm going to move on because this is a.
So, Senator Mayor, I think I should have an opportunity.
Sure.
As the counselor in question, I went to the meeting specifically because I do not and still do not believe that the expenditure of city dollars for the Bowlin Randy property is, is worth it for a cash that's going to support 200 people. We're talking about a significant amount of money and I thought the committee should be aware of that. I talked specifically about instances that have occurred in other disaster areas and was attacked by a member of your committee as being a person who is a fear monger. And that's what set the tone for that meeting. And so, there were definitely issues with that, with that meeting that turned into what they shouldn't have been. And I was simply questioning the expenditure of a large amount of money and what I believed was a lack on the committee's part of trying to look at alternatives to the property. That was what the purpose was.
Thank you. Where did you? Yeah, well, just to go ahead and comment. So, it came to the city council and it passed. It was a vote of the city council to proceed with investigating, having the attorney investigate. So, it's kind of inappropriate, I think, to have a discussion after a council has made a decision as a formal decision of the councils. And there's more discussion that can be had once the attorney has come back and looked at things. But that's what we get as the attorney, we, I don't know the exact nature of the motion, but it was to the effect that we shall proceed in a manner of property with the city attorney's advice. And so, after the fact, I'm a little bit concerned at hearing about this conversation. Okay, let's move on. Okay, Harvard. Liz Martin.
My name is Liz Martin and I'm the Harvard Commission Vice Chair. And it's a busy time in Harvard right now, as you all know.
There's a lot of things going on.
One thing I want to report, we did receive a clean Harvard accreditation, 98%. So that's cool. So, right now, we're dealing with some of our issues. We've had a kiosk go down over a weekend, second week in July, week it was. So we, we are rectifying the situation this week. Daily, to make sure credit cards can be taken. So, it was something that happened at the end of, their end of people collecting money. So, just telling people this is what happens when you get a lot of pressure, a lot of votes coming in and out of here. Right now, due to the season going on, we have so many fish carcasses to deal with that it's just overloading our system. So instead of using the dumpsters that are full, now they're using the garbage cans. And so, I think they're on top of that, working on that, as said yesterday. So those are really some busy issues with us right now. At our last meeting, we spent a significant amount of time talking about self-fueling of boats. And I believe that we came to a good understanding with the people that are self-fueling and that they cannot do it during hours of operation. They must have proof of insurance. They must know how to clean up if there's silt. So I think we both walked away from that conversation feeling like we had that situation well underhand. There's some things that are also going on. We have some clients hungered for two hour parking in the park. Right now, we're having a big amount of guide boats using our facilities. And they take our parking. So we're hoping that two hour parking limit in the park will keep them from parking their cars and going out fishing. We want that park to be used for people that it was intended for. So, and by, we're looking at, right now, our bay is silting yet again, quickly. Right now, the Coast Guard is having to park that one because there's so much silt right there. It's bending, it's hard on their engines and their boats to props. So, with Pam and myself, we've been in touch with the Army Corps of Engineers and that's definitely on their radar. So looking for 2025, hopefully dredging cycle. So the conversation is going. Real excited about that. They, they understand that we are silting up this hard. You can't give in to the fuel dock right now. So, and we're also looking at a crack in the seawall. So, the city's on top of it and they're taking care of it. It's a federal navigation channel through there. So it's of utmost importance that we get on top of it.
You have a question?
I do.
Yes, please. So, we were, I was out with D E Q and all these people looking, we're looking at, trying to predict our water shift, water, but we went off South Depot Bay Creek. And they just kept logging and there was, there were areas where there were just terrible erosion. And the.
I'm sorry, Senator, where was it?
Terrible erosion.
Where?
In the South Depot Bay watershed, which is where all this lot silt is coming from. So, to keep on having federal dollars paid for silt that's coming from logging operations that are, you know, not properly taking care of their.
You can go up there tomorrow, walk up.
Oh, I know where the dirt is coming from.
Yeah, I like it.
So.
Like, yeah.
Get their own. Maybe get the Department of Forestry to look into it. Maybe get some of the money from, from the logging companies that are causing this silt coming into our bay. It's, yeah, it's.
We know where it's coming from.
Yes, and that's how it's, it's silt up that much quicker. Even the Chetan has silted in again, we've got an island there again, so, yeah.
Which we're going to start early.
Yeah, we know where the dirt comes from. Yes. The US Corps of Engineers, that, you know, right now, they are, it's, it's their dime that pays for it, but I think it's a really good thing. We know where the dirt is coming from, right? And it's just happening so quickly that, so anyways, so one other thing that I just wanted to notice, like I said, it's, it's a busy time right now, but I think everyone's doing their best to keep up. By next, by September, we'll come to you with our focal talking about crab hot storage. We've been a busy committee with lots going on. Anybody have any questions for me?
I do. Liz, thank you for a great report. I do have a couple of questions. Want everybody, this is a comment. Her report on the tuna is just really descriptive of the impacts on the harbor we're having right now. And these can spill over. If we have too much fish carcass down there, the smell gets terrific and it dates the neighborhoods. I'm glad to hear that we're on it. Say we're on it? Okay, that's wonderful. The kiosk, it was down, you say? Do you know how much money we lost?
It's hard to say. Hard to say.
And why would that be? I mean, if.
I don't know how many people could be getting their credit card.
Well, you can take a look at a typical weekend.
Couple hundred. Just say some cars were down with that.
That's true.
It was just one day?
It was like two days, I believe.
It was over the weekend.
It wasn't our fault.
No, but it's still a concern. I mean, that's why we have to pass the harbor, or Roy, Detective Daley, we need to know. If it's not working, we need to contact the people and say it's down. So, we're on top of it, yeah, we need to redone everything.
Great, great. Fran, you, you, I'm sleeping better already. I like Fran's idea on this silt thing. I support that. Can you tell me where I can go to get pictures of this?
Down in the bay, down at the.
Low heights.
Low heights.
Well, no, I don't mean here, here, where this erosion is occurring.
Okay, it's all south of the way.
From Stonebridge off the road has.
Left or right?
Right.
Right, okay.
Right for. Yeah. And just go up to where the, up the logging hillside and off to the right, there's this steep road with no erosion control and you can just see the seven going down into the gull.
I would think that is in violation of any logic, practice that you have.
I'd like to get a picture. I should contact the department.
Yeah. That's why when we do dredge, I just want to take it up and dump it on the property and say, here's your dirt back. Well, I think that's, I think that we should follow up on that. I think this is a huge issue that we need to get our governor involved.
We, the Army Corps of Engineers are under contract to dredge our, our bay and we're on a cycle and so.
But the cycle isn't frequent enough with the logging.
Well, exactly. They're very, we have to keep our fueling open and if the Coast Guard can't get out, that's a, a big issue for us. And if they can't get fuel, they need to go to our fuel dock. So, we're a harbor space refuge, so it's, it's a big deal.
Question about the two hour parking signs. Are there any signs down there that say like, this area in front of the park is just for park people? I know the signs have been ordered.
Look, the signs would just say park or parking at City Park only or two hours. I forget exactly what they say, but they referred to the fact that the city park lot is two hours. Just a little piece right inside there.
That's really important because I've noticed they want their two people.
Because they can take out five, six people, may all drive one car. There goes our parking, so.
Is, is there an ordinance that act this up? There is an ordinance that says the city can set guidance on their own streets and right of the ways. Yes.
So we're working on a guidebook situation. I think we'll have some ideas from the city staffs, where kind of how we want to monitor that. It's taking place.
Oh, when is the construction on the new harbor going to start?
It starts second of October. They'll start taking the old docks out.
And?
Everything is under, everything is underway, going well.
Good, thank you, Liz.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Planning here, did you want to speak?
And Kit submitted his final. I need to report that.
Oh, that was a new protocol.
Yes.
Not a lot to report. We did not have a meeting yet this month. They got postponed until from last week to next week. We were still waiting on some pending engineering for one of our big application case files we're going to be reviewing. So that's going on next week. Do you plan on next Tuesday or Thursday? No one will be dealing here about that.
Where's the office? I believe it was next Thursday.
Next Thursday at 5:00 PM. So, obviously, we're, you know, Mr. Fox is, is out the door now and we've got, we even do state planer not completely onboard yet.
No, he'll be, he'll be starting, we don't, September.
Okay. He'll probably be drinking from the fire roads for a while, I imagine, trying to catch up and, you know, came from my grand, I believe it was, to Oregon, so.
Educated in Oregon.
Yeah.
Long time.
Yep. So he's coming back to Oregon and he's a state planner. I did have the opportunity to represent the planning commission at large in some of the applicant interviews that both the applicants were the opportunities to speak to. They were both real solid. Either one of them, in my opinion, would have done well. Anyway, that's where we're at, so I don't have anything new to report other than that. Waiting on some more engineering paperwork for future case files and I believe our interim planning services are going on until the new, until the new guy gets, gets speed on them. And I would like to add, there is, once again, I said this last month, but there is a sheet over on the thing in the corner there of all the vacancies in committees and commissions that the city of Depot Bay alone has, including the vacancy on the planning commission, a couple others as well. I can probably guarantee you that just about every incorporated city and unincorporated area in Lincoln County and every road district, sanitary district, water district, everywhere in the county probably also has vacancies. The county clerk's office maintains a list of them with dozens and dozens and dozens. If anybody needs something to do and they really want to make a difference in local government, here you go.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Parks, we don't have anybody.
Yes, here from parks.
Kim, did you want to speak on yours?
You want me to do parks and salmon off?
Sure, come on. Give it all.
Actually, don't have too much to say. The, the salmon net, we're going to plan on having a meeting on that then. Right now.
I haven't heard anything about it on the meeting.
Oh, okay. Right now, what we have left to do is to clean the nets. And it's kind of labor intensive. So once we get the meeting and Dennis and the group, they'll have that taken care of. So that's just about, we're pretty much done for the year until we get our eggs in center.
Did you find those 5,000 missing? No, I didn't, okay. There is somewhere.
Only the shadow of.
Oh, the shadow, yeah, oh, okay. And I don't think Parks has had a meeting?
Uh, not tomorrow. We're going to schedule up tomorrow.
We have one last one. Oh, okay.
And the business is, it's, it's pretty much normal. They are working on the park with the Red Drive.
Yeah, we have a, we're working with Bridge right today.
So, that's better.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you for stepping up for those. Okay, under unfinished business, we were all asking, I didn't send my email out. I found it, but I had not emailed it. Our five choices for the League of Organized Cities has their priorities. And it looks like, I think we're all agreeing on infrastructure funding is probably our top priority here. I would really like to see restoration of our recreational communities as a second one because that affects us so highly.
Mayor, forgive me, I had a question about that. I thought the legislature fixed that.
No, they did not. They did temporarily.
Bandied.
Yeah, for one year. It's going to be high on your agenda for next year.
And page 22 of the second pack, I listed the order of what each item, how many votes it got. So you can choose to just adopt it as it's shown by votes or redo it. So, up to the council.
I think we should adopt it because it's a general consensus of this.
Yeah, I, this would actually need a motion. I wrote the motion on page 22.
Oh, okay.
Well, I have, I have.
Of the new package.
Okay. So, I can make a motion, I'm going to improve the submission of the final legislative priorities from the City of depot Bay, and the priorities listed.
And then just list the priorities. Pardon me?
I'm sorry?
Pardon me, would you, would you say the priorities?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Priorities are infrastructure, funding, eight votes, restoration of recreational immunity, four votes, community safety, neighborhood ability, three votes, lodging tax flexibility, two votes, full funding and alignment, housing-
Production.
Production, two votes, invest, community-
Those are not, those are not, those are just the other votes.
Got it, thank you. I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the suggestions of the councillors, as read by councillor King into the record. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Question. Mayor, was there anything about emergency preparation?
No.
On just this, the possibilities? Okay.
The only thing was-
Invest in community resilience and climate planning.
And this is, it only got one vote, so it's not the top priority.
And, and that vote was in community safety?
No, invest in community resilience and climate planning.
Oh, well, and didn't you, you're the one that recommended that?
But it didn't re, it didn't re, it wasn't, when you added up all the priority votes, it didn't rank the top five.
Okay, and, and we're here to talk about that. And I didn't, like the mayor, I did not submit a, my choices, and I'm just happy to say that I think of the choices that you folks did, and, and commented on them. So, I would, I would say that I, had I done that, I would support that, because we obviously, I don't think people share our interests in emergency preparation elsewhere in the state. We are at the point of despair here, we need money on that, so I would, I'd be with Fran on this investment in community resiliency, even though we don't have, you know, I didn't turn a million. And that should move that up slightly, and I hope that everybody else would think about that. In order to do that, if you were to adopt it, just in one thing, I would recommend that we not do the full funding and alignment for housing production. And this is not because I don't want to see housing built. I, we don't, by the way, we don't build housing, we don't permit it. But, we have a real problem, folks, with infrastructure right now. Our, I'm told by our staff that one of the reasons we have this smell at our sewer plant that has grown over the years is because we're processing too much wastewater, right now, we're not able to do it sufficiently. And, so, we're seeing the impacts of this. We've been told that we're gonna lose our water plant, possibly. So, before we start, well, before we, I'm just saying, before we start bringing more people into this town, can we at least look at the infrastructure and get it on the line?
Yes. We're doing that, okay. We've got a vote before us, a motion. And I'm, I'm gonna leave it as it was, since you're a late comer and I'm a late comer. Any other discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to say that I must have missed the keynote, because I didn't get anything about it, but I too would have voted to invest in community resiliency and climate planning. I don't know if it's too late, or whatever.
It's important, I'm, I'm here.
Well, I don't think it's too late, because that's what the discussion's for.
All right.
Can we make an amendment to this, to, to add to Kim's?
That would be if councillor King would like to amend her motion.
Yes, I could, I could amend that. So, are we taking out whole funding on that? I think other cities around the state will put that in, so, okay. All right, so we'll change this around. Is that okay, councillor?
Please, oh.
Okay.
And, um-
So, we're gonna change from, by the way, for housing to investment resiliency.
Red one.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Maybe.
Thank you. Okay, always. Zoe, are you here? Come on.
I'm here.
Hi. Thank you for putting your application, for being on our town, our Parks Commission.
Thanks for having me.
That's exciting. And I loved your attitude about, I was reading this, was, um, sharing your experience with promoting, and, and doing that, that's awesome. I do appreciate it, so, sounds good. I'll open up the floor for any questions for this young lady.
One more question. You mentioned that you have a lot of experience with social media. How do you see this helping you in particular, community, if you're trying?
I think that just kind of bringing awareness to what's going on with, like, the parks and the recreation department, and just what's going on in the city in general is something that would be very beneficial for the city. I'm just, you know, I'm a working-class girl, I work at one of the restaurants in town, and a lot of my, you know, peers and coworkers ask, like, oh, why are you applying to be on a commission? And I just kind of wanted to get in there and be able to offer a new perspective, and get, you know, the word out to these people, because a lot of the people I talk to in this town, you know, people around my own age, my coworkers, they're not up to date on what's going on with the city, they don't care. It's something that, it's not getting to them, and it's not something that they're aware of. And so, I think kind of putting that out there, and having there be a space that more younger generations are gonna look at, and go, oh, this is something there, do we? That's gonna be very beneficial for the city, and that's something I think I can contribute.
Thank you. Thank you for stepping up. Yes, I'm grateful. Any other questions?
Don't let me off too easy, guys, go ahead.
Well, that's your put up that, like.
All righty, thank you so much, and we have a ballot, and we'll fill these out.
Quickly announce this, here.
Right now. Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Yep, one second. All righty, is there a motion to accept the ballots as submitted?
I'll make a motion to accept the ballots for the Parks Commission position.
I'll second.
I'll second, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to set the unanimous ballots as submitted.
Pardon, pardon me, I was hoping that councillor Silver, did you vote? Okay, I didn't see anything on my screen, so-
Oh, okay.
Remember, she's not here, so she can come down later.
So, are we all, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty, thank you. Now, the meetings are held usually at noon on Wednesdays, or they change?
We might need some flexible on that, so, I can reach out to you and see what your thoughts are. Wednesdays at noon are proving to be a bit more challenging for the city right now, for the staff, so, they have a little more flexibility, so I would want to know how flexible you have.
Okay, and this is for child people?
Yeah, I'll bring that up, I agree with that, and I get along with that. And I want to get you some information, so that you know, like, parks and that sort of thing, so.
Yes, definitely, awesome, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I did, I said I have somebody.
Our first meeting, our next meeting, I think, is gonna end at the next year, so I'll see you then.
Okay, sounds good, thank you so much, thanks, everybody.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Um, there is a privilege tournament request.
Okay, taking it from the top, my name is Emily, I'm here wearing two hats tonight, I'm the president of Friends of Lincoln County Animals, that runs the Pigeon Pilots, there's a store, there's one for the, one for the animal shelter, animal spay neuter, and for vet care for local pets, and other shelter needs. I'm also here representing the depot bay Lincoln City Privilege Club, of which my husband, Jack Schumate, is the director, and Jack is here tonight, but I think you all know him, unless there's a brand new council member. Just to keep things brief, since you have a full agenda tonight, I thought I would just lay out our request this evening. As you may know, Jack and I have put on privilege tournaments here on the central Oregon coast for many years, since, since Jack and I moved here, almost 20 years ago. And most of them in recent years, at least the last five, have been at the depot bay community hall, which is a wonderful playing facility, all of our players love it. We've done this twice a year, everyone loves the facility, they love depot bay, they love going to title raves, they, they love Mazalat, they love Moes, they, you know, they love all the, the opportunities that are here on the coast. When Jack and I moved here 20 years ago, there was only one ongoing privilege tournament in Lincoln City, and now, thanks to Jack's efforts in promoting the game here, there are eight that he has started, and we do twice a year tournaments at the depot bay community hall. And up until now, we've qualified for the reduced rental rate on account of the American Privilege Congress, of which this club is a member. We are a nonprofit, benefiting, you know, people who love this social game, the, the American privilege players is probably somewhere north of Cincinnati. People tend to be able to play more and go on what's called the tournament trail nationwide after they're retired. So, it's a, a very good game for mental acuity and socialization, which is very important for older people, as you all know. So, we like to keep these going. I myself, although I'm a dues paid member of the American Privilege Congress and of the depot bay Lincoln City Privilege Club, I don't play the silly game. It's way too frustrating for me. I like proceeds in which I am in total control of the outcome. I am a freelance copy editor for Random House, and that's my idea of a good time, because if I make a comment, that's what goes in. I don't have to depend on any degree of, look, unlike these bored frustrated players.
So, what are we asking for today?
We are asking for a continuation of the reduced rental rate. I understand that a couple months ago, you know, decided that just being a nonprofit wasn't enough to qualify for the reduced rental, but the event had to benefit a charity, and that's where my other hack comes in. As the president of Friends of Lincoln County Animals, we'd love to make this a benefit for, not for FOGUS itself, not for the organization, but for the Lincoln County Animal Shelter. Now that they have a location in mind for the new shelter building, we are helping to raise funds specifically for that, and that's what we would do. Privilege players are notoriously frugal bunch. They, we've asked for voluntary donations in the past, this time it would have to be a mandatory donation, but if it makes a difference between a very, you know, steep rental rate, which would come out as a prize money, and the lower rate in exchange for a mandatory donation, they would be happy that you did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, would you tell them how often you're looking at having this particular tournament?
Our, our tournaments are twice a year, typically July and December. Which we've done for at least the last five years, I think, through the satisfaction of, of the city and the city council.
Your honor, does this take a motion?
Yes.
Your honor, I'd like to move that we extend the nonprofit fundraising tie-in event with, to the privilege folks, as long as they can hold down the gunfire and drunken behavior.
As I recall, actually, when Mr. Beasley, you came to the, you did a feature, a photo picture on privilege, and how wonderful it was, and, you know, pictures of the national champion, Lucas Thompson, who came to our little tournament, we draw from all over the country.
And exposed, and-
Before you do that, because I need to draw your attention to page 20 of the second packet, the privilege one. This is the fee that you approved, and we can certainly make some kind of a, you know, you can certainly propose some kind of reduction, or you just go with this nonprofit rate, that's $50 a day, but I don't think that's what we want to do, I think we want to give some kind of a, extra consideration for this particular thing, but you would need to make a motion, either, that's not based on, right now, the motion would actually hurt you, I don't know, because, because we don't actually really have that. We have the government local state, which is 25 daily fee, the nonprofit is 50, there is the rate for multiple use for nonprofit groups, which is a one-time usage, then they go down, break it down to all the way quarterly. We might be able to look at the dates that they're wanting to use overall, and look if we can get down to, whether it looks like the ones they use is a $10 per day or a quarterly, we can kind of take a look at government, we should know what basically they want to do.
So, I would rather just keep it to what we have, even though I feel sympathy for the group, because we're establishing a precedent then. And I also don't see anywhere in this where it says it has to be, it has to be donated late to a nonprofit.
And it doesn't, I'm not sure where that came from, it just needs to be a final one, see nonprofit, not-for-profit organization, so, that's all, but you already-
No, well, the American Privilege Congress is-
Right, so-
A final one, see, already.
I just wanted to leave it on profit, right? But, I just wanted to clarify that nowhere in our rules would require, you know, it'd be nice to make donations, but you, it's not required by us.
Oh.
Yeah, so you're disqualified for the $50 rate.
The question is, is it's multiple day, correct?
Right, if she, that's what I'm saying, we look at how many days you want to use, and it fits, we can maybe get it down to one of these, whether you use it, you say, oh, no, there are many days.
Each tournament consists of typically three days, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then, and one of them is typically in early to mid-July, and the other somewhere in, in the December.
Three days, twice a year.
Yes. Six days, so, that it, yeah.
And so, Kim, under our current, that would be $600, is that what?
No.
It would be $50 daily fee plus?
$300.
Oh, yeah, so fifty, right, $300 to you.
No, it's five, one time is-
Right, so, I'm just looking at this chart, because tw- two times bimonthly is twice, I go bimonthly, but that actually is not very correct. That's twice a year, not bimonthly. But we don't have anything, like, if you use, it would be twice a year versus four times a year, you see what I'm saying, so we don't really have to give it those, in the middle of that. We have four times a year, which is four days.
That seems to make the most sense to me, to be the quarterly rate.
That's what I was thinking.
Should we use the $30 per day?
Is that, is that motion scanned, then?
Um, your motion would actually charge them more, so you might want to change that, and maybe change it to what, some of you talked about, quarterly?
$30 a day.
I moved that we adopt the $30 a day rate for the American Privilege Congress.
And, and you're saying we don't have to hold the players upside down and shake them?
No.
No.
Well, they'll be happy about that.
I mean, you still can, but-
We will shake the can.
Is there a second to the motion? And any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded to adopt $30 a day for the American privilege players. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Emily.
Thank you so much, this has been wonderful for us, thank you.
Thank you. North Lincoln Sanitary, you're up, hi there.
Good evening, mayor, sir, and councillors, I'm Tina French from our hunting sanitary service. We are your solid service provider, and this is our annual rate review. I'm gonna be real fast, because you have a very packed agenda to make, and so, I, I know you all got your report in advance. Just to be brief, we are requesting a 2.74% CPI increase. This is an 85% of a two-year combined increases, is what the ordinance says, so, if anybody keeps track of the CPI and says it's not 2.7, that's why. There are three major instigators in that, and we've talked about it before. But one of the big ones is our insurance rates. We had almost a 40% increase in insurance this year, and that is directly related to battery fires in our industry. And we count ourselves lucky, because we know several solid waste toddlers in Oregon that are not able to get insurance. And so they either have to self-insure, or the cities are having to cover them in some way. So battery fires are a real issue. We just had good friends in Grant's past lose a truck last week to a battery fire. So not only is it an environmental disaster, it is a significant financial disaster. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, and then I'll open it up for questions. The, two things that we have on the forecast that we are concerned about is, one of them is Valley Coffin Butte landfill. That is where we haul our garbage. It's located just outside of Corvallis. Republic Services owns that landfill. And Benton County is not approving their conditional use permit to increase the size of the landfill. So it is permitted space that has been permitted and approved by the DEQ for landfill space. You still have to go before the Benton County Planning Commission to get your conditional use. And they have been working on it for over a year. The latest is that Benton County has denied it, this is fresh off the presses. They have denied their latest application and hired a consultant to review their application and asked Republic Services to come back with several menu items that are fairly vague, to be honest. But not, it directs, it directly affects all of us. It really affects Deco Bay and Lincoln City because of your sewer sludge. I think you all know, we haul your sewer sludge for you to Coffin Butte landfill. And if they close, we don't have a place to haul sewer sludge, because I don't think we want to haul it all the way to Arlington. So that is, that is probably where we will be taking our garbage if Coffin Butte landfill closes. Arlington is about an eight to nine hour drive from here. So that has huge rate implications for every rate here in Lincoln County. Every rate here on the western side of Oregon it has. Or the tiny hairs on the tail of the dog that haul there. So this is a big deal for Marion County, Benton County, Yamal County, Lincoln County. The other thing is trucks. Lon just came from the Oregon Trucking Association Conference in Bend. And I think everybody knows a little bit about what's going on with diesel engines. And basically, what the state of Oregon adopted some California legislation that said that diesel engines, for every diesel engine sold, nine diesel engines sold, one ZEV vehicle, which is a zero emissions vehicle. And for the better part of it, it's mostly electric. There are talks of hydrogen and all sorts of stuff going on out there. But right now, the only thing out there is electric. So one electric vehicle has to be sold in a state for every nine diesel engines sold. Nobody's buying electric vehicles, because they are double to triple the cost, and they do about a half to a third of the amount of work. And so therefore, manufacturers are not manufacturing diesel engines coming to the state of Oregon. So we have been waiting for new trucks for quite some time, almost two years. We, we do have one on the way. After this, though, I think we're in trouble. And, well, I don't think that. The Federal American Trucking Association came to this conference and basically said, it's going to be a disaster, and they won't fix it until it is a disaster. And that means no groceries on your shelves, no garbage picked up. It's a, it's a big deal. And it's going to be, have a rate impact, because if we do have to switch to electric vehicles, we're looking at over a million dollars for one truck. So there's some great things. But the landfill thing is something I would highly recommend. Kimberly, there are updates you can sign up for. We will keep you updated, obviously. But if you do want to read more about it, or contact your Benton County Planning Commissioners, if you know somebody, just to find out, you know, what, what's the hangup? Because nobody wants a landfill in their backyard. I completely understand that. But everybody creates solid waste, and it has to go somewhere. And I think it's imperative for the economics of western Oregon to have one in western Oregon. And you should also know that DEQ is basically saying they will never cite a landfill on the western side of Oregon. I'm going to open it up to questions on the rate review. Anything else you have? I know Lexi has come before you to update you on the Recycling Modernization Act. You'll be hearing more from that in the future.
So what would we do with our, why would you?
I don't know. I talked to Paul about it last week when we were here. And there are options to dry it. There, I am not a sewer treatment plant operator, but I know just from working with Deco Bay and Lincoln City, the options that they're looking into. Lincoln City is looking into some sort of dryer to make it, help me out here.
Cake.
Well, no, it's currently cake.
Oh, the, for, for. For money. Thank you.
Well, right, but there's a classification process. Class A. So basically, what it means is you're de-watering it more than it already is. So currently, we are, we are de-watering it to a cake standard.
If it's pasteurized, then it becomes a class A, you can use it for.
Land application.
Okay.
Which they don't like either.
But it can happen.
People rather don't like it. Plaquemines County did land a creation, but had to take it to the east with the bigger fields, you know, the huge spaces.
Away from water, I think is one of the biggest.
Away from humans, big fields, so that was an expense.
Yeah. I, it's going to be an expense if we have to take it somewhere else. But we will do the best we can to, you know, find a place, work with you, figure out, you know, help with the economics of that.
Ben, how does this affect our budget, Kim?
So just so you know, if the landfill were to close, that's the other thing that's swirling around, is trying to pick a date. We're looking at, we believe, seven years.
Oh, okay.
But we've also heard a year and a half. So a year and a half is the worst I've heard. Seven is the best I've heard.
Great. Christina, thank you. Thanks for coming, Gina. Why did recycling go down? Do you have an idea?
I don't have much of an idea, other than our vacation rentals pull all their recyclable parts. And so I think I mentioned to you guys, with the, in the Recycling Modernization Act, we have what's called the UCSL, which is the Universal Collection Recycling List. And so no longer will it be different what they collect in Portland versus what we collect here on the east side. So I'm hoping that we get maybe a portion of our vacation rentals that will participate again. The other thing that is mandated in the RMA is multifamily recycling, which is terrifying because of communication and education. We don't have access to tenants. We only have access to owners. And they don't communicate with their tenants. But I'm hoping that those two things will help increase our, and quite honestly, like, it could just be an anomaly. You know, we keep, we've been keeping track of this for a long time. And, you know, we see ups and downs, and a lot of times we even put our finger on it. This one, I couldn't.
Yeah. Tina, thank you for this report. And I want to say that your reports up until this one have always been kind of a delight, because you're a very transparent company. And you do so much on, I see your net income before taxes actually less than a million dollars. And, you know, I look at your facilities that you have. They're modern, they're clean. At the one up Schooner Creek, I see that you're building.
Yeah.
You're still building.
That's exciting news. I was going to say, but.
I just want to congratulate you on running such an excellent company. It's been very good to us. But this is a troubling report. And I think that especially, as you described this issue of transport, people need to be aware of this, that it's one thing to signal our virtue at the state capitol and to make these unrealistic goals that we have to meet. And for those who don't think it's unrealistic, we will, as citizens, be paying the price for this.
Oh, 100%.
And it's, it's going to drive a lot of people maybe over the cliff. By the way, in today's State's Journal, I think you can buy this, I just bought a copy tonight when I saw the headline on page one, Coffin Butte landfill application incomplete.
That's the article I was telling you about that's fresh off the presses.
That's, and, and, and I can see the reason that headline was written out by now. I haven't read the article yet. And one last question. When your, these batteries blow up, what kind of batteries?
Lithium ion. So the little nickel sized ones, those can, can cause an entire truck to burn up. It can cause an entire transfer station to burn down.
For the burning. How should those be handled?
So we recycle those for free at our recycling center. So please bring them in. Do not put them in your recycling. Do not put them in your garbage.
How do we store them until they're removed?
You can just put them in. So what happens is there is a thin membrane, thin membrane, like skin, in between the layers in there. And if that membrane gets punctured, you have instant igniting.
Terrible reaction.
Yeah. And so you can store them in a, you know, Ziploc bag. Just don't put them somewhere where you're going to set, you know, a dumbbell on top of them or. But they don't have to be stored any way fancy, other than make sure they don't get crushed.
I'll watch it.
And that's your Sonic, bring us your Sonic, sir, toothbrush. Bring us the whole toothbrush. Because we called Sonicare and said, hey, how do we get the battery out of this? And they said, smash it. And I about lost my mind. So bring us the whole toothbrush. If you have something that has, if you're recharging something, your cell phone, anything, bring us the whole thing.
Good advice. Thank you.
So the last thing I wanted to say is, for over two years now, we have been building a brand new transfer station located on Anderson Creek. And we are very close to it being done. The building is erected. We are working on electrical. And so as soon as that's done, we'll have a grand opening. And I hope everybody can come and see it while it's still clean and nice.
Thank you so much. Any other questions, Regina?
Great. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for being here. And good luck with everything.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to accept the increase as presented by.
I would make that motion to accept the 2.74 CPI increase.
Is there a second? Second to accept the 2.74 increase in. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, license application before. Why do you have so many applications?
Oh, that's the wrong people. We have to start up.
Oh, I see.
In Oregon, they're probably other, not their own.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the license application for only in Oregon that's presented?
It's basically to prove the issuance of a license to.
Check out the story.
To prove the issuance of a license to only Oregon.
So is this, what I didn't understand, is this different from our existing liquor store? Or is this going to take over the?
This is the little shop that used to be Johnny's.
Yeah.
And it's now Oregon, Oregon.
Only Oregon.
Yeah. So they're just going to be selling probably very specific products related to only Oregon?
So only to go in.
Yeah.
It's off, it's off-privacy, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Not on privacy.
Yeah.
Okay. Where were we? A motion.
Thank you. Counselor Kane, motion. Thank you. I'm just saying that out loud, so do you know?
Is there a second to the motion to accept the only Oregon application?
I'll second it.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
And pardon me for the record, Counselor Salford is saying aye. We just can't hear her. She's mouthing it.
Good, okay. You're doing a good job there. Keep mouthing it.
I'm mostly saying that also for Gina, so she knows it's a, it's a seven. Thank you.
Okay, we've got the, is that Hyberg Street, one way? Do you folks want to come up and speak to this? You got this, new presenter?
My name's Jim Gates. I live at 30 South Coast Hyberg. What we're looking at is how narrow Hyberg is. You can't get two cars on that street.
As I found out about three weeks ago, it surprised me. I was like, ugh, what do I do?
If she backed up, backed up into the other moving parking lot, or you thought I got in there.
Or to coast.
Drive away from her neighbor's driveway, and other way, other cars and pedestrians. And what we're asking, and the other one is Hawkins. Hawkins, you go and pull out on Highway 101, you've got to stick the nose of your car on highway to see traffic coming from, from the north. So both of the streets are extremely narrow. And what we're requesting is Hyberg, we made one way going east.
Okay.
And the reason being is, Lang Street, I'm sent to Hyberg about 10 to 20 feet before 101, and it is facing northeast. And then they just turn right, and they turn to Highway 101. That's what we're asking. We're asking Hyberg to go east and Hawkins to take us.
I think I have that backwards, right?
Yeah.
On our resolution?
Afterwards.
Okay. Well, because we went back and forth on this, and the petition was either way. So it's, we would have to revise the resolution however the residents want it.
But somebody who lives on Lang Street, it makes a lot more sense to have Hyberg go west to east, right?
West to east.
So you're saying.
Right? Is that what you want?
East or west?
East or west?
West to east.
Hyberg would be west to east.
Right.
West to east.
From the ocean to the highway.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you. That's all I know from my west seat.
It's from the ocean to the highway.
So you would come out at 101. Okay. Now we got. So we just need to reverse that.
But you're asking also for, this is only about Hyberg.
This is only for Hyberg.
But you're saying.
Then who will I, then we may need to ask, or maybe the neighbors up there on Hawkins, because that's a dangerous street.
Yeah, I suppose. So if I could comment.
Yeah.
I live just off of Hawkins.
Oh, okay.
And I have just about taken out a car that was turning up Hawkins. And I've been on the receiving end of that as well, where when you turn to go toward the ocean on Hawkins, you cannot see anybody coming out. And what ends up happening is you come down that street, and by the time you've turned, then you could have cars on your tail on Highway 101, making that turn. It's, it's really a dangerous place. And so.
So that one would be from west, only one way from east to west.
From toward the ocean.
With the.
Yeah, from, from Highway 101. I would like to see, if we're going to do that, then we do both of those streets at the same time and make a loop there. So that's.
So do we need to notify the neighbors and all of us about that?
Yeah, we, we kind of don't want to make changes to the roads without them at least being notified, that they're already being considered. So I would say let's just stay with the Hyberg right now. Or bring it back and include Hawkins.
Because we have the neighbors on Hyberg all here.
Yeah. Right. We know that hope for us.
I don't know if there's questions about this or something.
Oh, Shulay, did you have a question about this particular issue or something else? Your hands up.
Well, I had a question. I'm just going.
Well, I had a question, I'm just a little confused, I'm trying to clarify. Uh, are we trying to create Lane Street as a one-way street? I'm just, I'm a little confused.
Hyberg.
Hyberg.
Pardon me?
Hyberg.
H E I B E R G.
Okay, so Lane Street isn't being talked about right now?
No.
Okay.
Always a preference. No, she's talking about L A N D, I'm talking about L A N G.
Oh, okay.
Or we said Lane, she thought you said Lane.
We're good.
Thank you.
So we can either just go ahead and take care of Hyberg, or.
Hyberg, alright.
Okay, and then when I talk to the neighbors about, now you have to know. Well, I'm not making any changes to Hawkins right now. On the Hyberg and on the neighbors here. Yeah.
So I have some one-way summaries that we could install. One of them goes straight up, I don't know if that's good for Hyberg, it's just one way with it.
You want that one?
I hope so.
But I have, I have the verbiage on a square that says one way only. On my square, it's a medico sign, it's traffic approved, so.
Mike, if you're not ready for the corner Hyberg.
Yeah, yeah, and then we'll we'll put, there's one that I'll have to order that's, that'll say do not enter a one-way street. And that's what it says, yeah.
And if you have a pain, avoid it.
Comment, if, I think I agree we should go ahead and do this, but it is gonna impact the traffic on Lane Street. That's gonna have to be, I mean, it's already said, they're a street, but if you can't have people going the wrong way on Lane Street, we're gonna make Hyberg.
Yeah, I I foresee them going, that's saying do not enter in very left onto Lang. I agree. And then around, so.
That's where they want more traffic. Does that comply with your plans also?
As long as, as long as we don't have traffic on both directions.
I'm worried about, yes, I have to make.
Would it make sense for us to reach out to everybody in that neighborhood?
Yeah, we're not doing Hawkins tonight.
Well, there's also Lang, that's.
Like at Briscoe.
If it's going to impact those, we probably should reach out to Paragon.
We need to figure that out, because it will impact.
Yes.
Yeah.
Let's let's take a walk with John, our city engineer will be here on Friday. We'll have him go give us advice on how to make sure we do this, so.
Can we get a POV from our engineer?
Yeah, so we don't cause any accidents or make it worse.
I'm all for it, but definitely you will get Lane.
Because Lane and Briscoe.
Oh, yeah, we can wait until that's through the resolution?
Uh, no.
I thought we were. For Hyberg.
If we if we if we sign Hyberg now, it will impact.
Okay, we need to wait till we talk to people.
Okay. We're on, so we're on, and we'll talk to our city engineer, and then we'll get back to you guys.
Can I ask a question of the staff?
Yes.
Um, Kim or Embrady, is it possible that there's something you could do with the landscape on Highway one one at Hawkins to clear that up?
Yeah.
It's possible, yeah.
I got a note to Embrady, so maybe we eat the salow, so you have better.
Absolutely, we can look at someone who's.
Yeah, it's Kent Street.
We'll take it out at the next meeting, and we'll get every everything on order.
Mayor, do you have?
Can we talk to any of your neighbors in the meantime?
From staff?
Yeah.
Uh, you know, in a presentation like this, I would love to see photos of them, possibly, so we could all be on the same page. I'm not from those parts, I kinda know where Hyberg is, but I use it online, and so I think photos and a map would be typical for you kind of opposing.
When we have a planner on board, I bet we are gonna get that.
Well, and, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I I I think it's a good idea.
I got some great ideas coming up and another whole line of that could maybe help that issue right there.
Oh, wait, it's directly across the highway, right where the car audio shop is, it's a street right there, that's Hyberg.
Street, yeah?
Where the fire was.
Is that the one coming into it?
Plains, yeah, the one that's to Plain, L A N G, yeah.
That's the one with.
L A N G.
Yeah, it's an immediate left up to Hyberg.
I know.
Thank you.
Thank you for being so patient, awesome. Um, next is the construction contract award for the park bridges. And we have a, um, total contract amount of ninety eight thousand seven hundred and forty eight dollars, which is within our budget to demo, so. Um, Kim, is it possible to see what these bridges look like? I mean, are they gonna be?
I can send you the invitation to bridge the Lanes lines, I can send them that.
That would be kind of fun.
They're gonna be pretty much the bridge we have there.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, they stay with pretty much the same design, but newer.
So has everyone had a chance to review this? Is there a motion to accept the contract as submitted? Is there a second?
I said it.
It's been moved to second to award the contract as proposed under. Order, order, as of maybe, for ninety eight thousand seven hundred and forty eight dollars. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Is there any sort of warranty on there? I didn't read all the time, but there's a lot of it.
Um, I can verify the warranty, Counselor Watson, and send it out to you, but I'm sure that there is. Um, also, Counselor Rec had to ask some specific questions that are engineering firm, who will kind of do the project manager. And make sure that they, they'll talk to contractor and discuss them about it.
Can you tell me what the timeline is on this move later down?
I don't know, did I?
Good night.
Safe. Yeah, so I think I'll think until once this contract is awarded, we get a pre-construction meeting, we won't know exactly when we'll be able to start. So I can let you know whether pre-construction meeting is.
Probably in water work window required.
Right, I was thinking that, I think we were thinking we probably already maybe gotta get started. I don't know, we'll see, another year maybe, I don't know. But let me, I don't wanna say, because I don't think it says in the contract, so we need to wait till we have a pre-construction meeting, and then we'll get a better timeline. But I can also ask that question as well.
I'm reading.
But I don't think there's anything.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm reading, look at that line, that's gonna be exciting.
One of the things I intend to do is once we get some more details, I do intend to put this information. I'm gonna start a project page on the website where we track these projects, since between me and Embrady, we're gonna have a lot more of these things going on, so that people can vote and see what is going on, and they can see the deadlines and have an idea of when things will happen, so.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
Good idea, thank you. Um, okay, so we've got another resolution for it before, since everyone had a chance to read that. Accepting the property that's already been deeded to us.
Mayor, I have a question about this.
Okay.
What what are we going to do with this property?
We don't know yet. Because Kim's been working with some people from the state, and, um.
Truck industry assistance.
We're gonna put together a couple of ideas if we're council.
Can this be a side of cash?
No, it's.
I mean, the property is probably too bad, it looks like a cash on.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm guessing it's done commercial, so.
Um, should we have staff on the environmental, or?
Their, the environmental, um, will take up two months to get done. Yeah, we got.
When you say ideas, you already have something in mind?
Not yet, no, I'm, we're just putting exploring, it definitely.
From one of the, from one of the meetings, we discussed the idea of it possibly be in some sort of workforce housing or something like that. Um, but that was just an idea that was tossed out, that was not anything that was solid. Um, it would still be up for debate in this section, yeah.
Just gonna put together and twist the ideas and go forward.
So that's the plan?
Yes. So we've got resolution number five six six dash twenty four, and we have resolution accepting the donation of real property from the Stanley Revocable Trust of assessors, Russell number R one eight six five eight, R two one seven one three, and R two three three six two. Is there a motion to accept this for this resolution? I'll make that, I'll make that motion, okay. Is there a second? It's been moved to second to accept resolution five six six two four. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Do we have a value of this property?
Uh, we only have the tax done here. That's all we have. All in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have a question?
I do have a question, um, so we're paying for an environmental here on property that we already own, and I thought the purpose was that the environmental would give us an opt-out if we needed it. And so I guess my question is, since we already own this property, why would we bother paying for an environmental on it?
Just for aesthetic purposes. It's twelve hundred dollars, and it's well worth it to know what we can do with it. Yeah.
Is is that what it was, was twelve hundred? Because I saw it was down on AKS's, AKS's report that they were gonna hire a third party to do it, so.
Yeah, they have to hire a third person.
I don't know the twelve hundred dollars for an environmental is.
I don't know how much it's gonna be.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that is something that I can certainly tell them to come back with a quote before we say yes, let's go forth and do that.
Did did you listen to the meeting notes that, um, is it type one?
Right, I told him phase one, or type one, or level one.
Yeah, so that's a very, very, it shouldn't be that.
Yeah, I told him to, I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be twelve hundred either, but I don't know what it's gonna be.
There won't be one.
Yeah. And I mean, doing one now or doing one later, because we would still, depending on what we would intend to do, and we might end up having to do one anyway.
It's important to.
It is.
Uh.
Yes, I I I'm concerned about this, because I'm hearing, I heard two things, that this is a zone commercial, and that I heard this idea for workforce housing. And I'm concerned, I always have been, anybody who knows me over the last thirty years knows that I'm concerned about the loss of designated commercial and light industrial in this town. And the idea that when we we would turn this into workforce housing, that's concerning.
It's just an idea, obviously, it was just an idea, nothing's been set in stone.
You can have housing in commercial areas.
Yeah.
So many less.
Happens all the time.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Um, okay, we've got a job classification now for our new city planner position, and has everyone had a chance to review this?
Yes.
And I have a question. Can I ask it now, or should I wait until this?
Yeah.
So, um, we just approved, we just, some council approves the salary range, and then staff decides how much they get paid? What's the profit?
Yes.
That's how it is?
Yes. So. Yeah, so you're approving me to offer within the salary range. Generally, you start at the beginning of the salary range, so unless the person has some sort of, um, skill level, or experience, or whatever, then you can start them a bit higher on the schedule, but normally you start at the low end.
And, um, so we initially said thirty two to forty hours, we're starting forty hours now?
Because neither one of the candidates were willing to work less than forty hours.
And one thing I didn't see, I saw a, um, in the job description had work, excuse me, word processing experience. But I don't know, did anybody ask him, or I didn't see from his resume, did he have any GIS experience? And to me, if you don't have GIS experience as a planner, you're, you're really, your hands are tied in terms of being able to do things.
We didn't ask them that they both did.
They did those.
They were both city, they were both planners, and some experienced, both of them have done GIS planning work. One was, I think Lynn was a bit more basic than Colton or Vice versa, I can't remember the exact, but they both had experience with. Because they, whether, um, I gave you their staff reports that they wrote, they they had experience in GIS. Um, probably about the same level that Kit did when he was there. They don't need a lot of experience, but they need enough to understand what the plans and what they're looking at in mass and stuff.
Well, and then also degenerate, um, GIS.
Yep, yep. If you looked at this, if you looked at the reports, both Colton and Lynn and Embrady, they had some, right, their staff reports were beautiful, they were great, so.
I don't know if they did, they've not been worked or anything.
No, they did.
Okay.
So who's doing the planning for us right now?
Um, his name is Zach Pelts, he's with AKS Engineer, and he's a senior planner there.
And what are we paying them to do that?
I think we're paying him the cities, the person will rate the same as, um, John, which is two hundred fifteen per hour. But he has junior person Natalie, and one other person, I can't remember, that's been working with Carl recently. And I think they're in a hundred and twenty five, a hundred and fifty, somewhere around there. He's only there to do like a more senior review, but he has him doing the label.
So if we pay this person a hundred and twenty five to a hundred and fifteen hour this this firm, can we get the work done for that amount that we're gonna pay here, or for less? We chop that out to see?
Well, I don't know that answer, um, we've already, everybody also, everybody also said to hire an employee, so he's been hired. So we couldn't really do anything about that right now.
Okay, right.
And that was part of the discussion.
We've we've hired several.
Yes.
Have the references been checked?
Yes, well, we're still waiting for the background checks, but everything else is coming up over there.
So, Sarah, a motion to accept the.
And just one more second.
Oh, yeah, so, um, this planner will be reviewed in six months by you and Julie Carla as staff supervising, or?
Well, in the planning commission, and John, the AKS Engineer, because he will be working really close with John. So I believe that they.
There's gonna be a formal review.
Oh, yeah, I believe in a, ask everybody, so.
But that's written in that there's gonna be a six month review.
It's an armed employee handbook.
And we, um, sorry, I don't, I'm not aware enough to know, we can, um, at least, we can terminate the contract at that point if I have it.
We're at will, so you can terminate a contract at any point, but it's always good to have a reason if you do.
Thank you. Now can I do a motion?
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, is there a motion to accept the new job classification as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say aye.
It's been moved in second to accept the job classification of city planner. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I would like to say one thing on this, I'm gonna vote no on this, because, uh, I'm not convinced that we need a planner. I I know that we have to have planning services, but I don't think that we've explored the the idea of MOUs enough to to calm my concerns about it. Uh, and also the idea that we were looking for a, uh, somebody to do this at a less time, suggests to me that we should be still pounding the pavement for some kind of hybrid position to add somebody else to the payroll of Depot Bay, I think, not knowing what our revenue situation is in the long run. We haven't had any budget forecasts made, and it looks to me like our expenses are very robust.
We don't have a budget?
No, we have a budget, but I'm talking about budget forecast, where are we gonna be with the rising.
Okay.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm also gonna be on the no side of this, because I, um, I don't, I don't think we've, when I, when we originally discussed this, it was a thirty two to forty hour a week. And I, I went back and I had to listen to the entire conversation from that that council meeting. Because I thought originally we started as a contract, uh, we got to the end of the meeting and the motion was made to do a city employee. And with a city employee, I mean, we're gonna pay between seventy eight and a hundred and nine thousand, plus an additional thirty to thirty five percent for benefits, PERS, insurance, uh, whatever those things may be, so. Um, it's it's, if we look at the numbers, it's like six percent of the transient lodging tax that goes into the general fund. And I just don't, I I just don't see a need for a full-time planner, at least not until we can pay for it, and somebody can show me how we're gonna pay for it.
So any other discussion?
Well, weren't we paying Kit about eighty thousand a year?
Probably not that much, probably closer to like seventy three.
It was only.
But he was only two hundred days a week, right, an occasional. Um, and I'd just like to point out that disposition that was already voted to approve the hiring of an employee, um, under the job description that I shared at the same time, this is merely saying that you're okay with the job classification. Not really you're okay with the position, um, as an employee, and was the offer was to look for somebody. was the offer was to look for somebody for thirty-two to forty hours a week. I wasn't able to find anybody that wanted to move and work less than forty hours a week. This was a decision you all made at one previous conference at at council. So I'm not sure why the backtrack when it was already approved, this is just for the position. Classification, part of the classification.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm one of the powers.
Real call.
Does she remember the nominee?
Bowing. Counselor Stotter?
Aye.
Counselor Michelle?
No.
Counselor Watson?
Yes.
Counselor Rec?
Yes.
Counselor King?
Yes.
Mayor Short?
Yes.
Counselor Beasley?
No.
Okay. Um, we've got a capital uh, chairman, uh, do you wanna go into this a little bit for us, Brady?
Yeah, it's the GIS system for the infant structure of water and sewers.
No, this is your mini excavator.
Oh, the mini excavator, I'm sorry.
He's so excited about this other one.
Yeah, this is the mini excavator that was in the um, uh, budget. If we go through, uh, I was trying to mention earlier, um, Sourcewell is a, is a company that we are a member of, the city is a member of.
That says Sourcewell.
And they do all the RFP, they use not just three um, pricing, they do hundreds of vendors that are orbiting Washington in our area. And they get equipment and they get the, probably the best price for the city municipality. Um, that um, if for the city, the exact um, specs on that particular piece of equipment. If it's a pickup truck or a excavator in this this case. Um, like this thing probably retails for um, you know, hundreds of fifty thousand dollars.
Wow.
So we're getting it under, just under a hundred, but it also includes um, a um, flail mowing bucket to help with the uh, blackberries. Where you don't have to weed, take the machinery and crew.
Oh, that would be nice. Or hire somebody else to do it for us.
We had my ring and it's cost, you know, tens of thousands of dollars a year just to to flail mow some of our vines.
I think it'll allow us to actually do more vegetation management than we've been able to do with just our staff.
Yeah, we're not having a polite.
Cause growing season.
Not having to apply um, ground up or anything like that, we're transparent in that.
Right. Good.
Can I come right?
But it also gives us a backup, we had spent a whole lot of money just to get our backup, one of this down for a little bit of time, we had to run the backup, another backup from same one that was like three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, and we could use this piece of equipment to cover our time at one town and this is some redundancy.
Some.
In the areas, if we gotta work on the highway at two in the morning or something.
Yeah.
Now, I hated, I hated to rent a backhoe while I was present, we had that. So this would have stopped us from doing that.
Yeah.
So Mayor, the um, suggested motion was, uh, not the direct one for this. But I move that we um, we approved the purchase of a mini excavator, flail mower for ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. It's been moved and seconded to accept the um, bid from Peterson Cat. For an excavator in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Is this an electric mini excavator?
No, it's uh, it's got a small piece of a pole.
Thank you.
Any other discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now you've got your GIS.
Okay, so the GIS um, is a system we started in twenty nineteen. And we went around and marked with uh, global satellite positioning, all the water meters coming in Depot Bay, all the manholes, all the mouths, and we started with a phase one and that was in twenty nineteen and then we, we uh, we put together uh, a system where we kind of lined up, manhole to manhole and and kind of did our own um, in-house, trying to figure out where the water mains are and what they are. It needs to have phase two, which will tell us exactly where the water mains are and what type of water main and all the newer development um, system that's going in the hills of Depot Bay. But what it would do is give the uh, infrastructure on its cell phone. Um, and have the crew, when they go out to locate or if there, somebody's hit a water line or something, we can identify it immediately. Um, it, right now, we use old maps from, the water lines were put in in nineteen sixty, it's about two-thirds of our town.
Or a co-manger.
Yeah, I mean, they'll use these witching rods, which I would not go on the, um, but uh, yeah, so we're trying to come off these old, old maps and they're very not, or they're really not accurate. I'm trying to get, yeah, they're not reliable.
Cause we found out a little, little left over, the remnants.
Yeah, so what I'm trying to do before I retire is put, I have a whole infrastructure in my head, I know every piece of 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 pipe thing.
Yes.
None, well, everything is buried in the ground, I I've came across in the last thirty-plus years. So my goal is to get all that information on the GIS system for the next phase of the public works.
This is uncovered, is it better?
Yes, part of it was already budgeted for, others can come out of the professional services where we talk about doing that. I also wrote in there that some of the money will come out of the Lenny budget as well, because it's to serve the infrastructure that way. Um, there is some, a very worthwhile expanded uses of this that we'll talk about at a later date, not this year. Um, which will really help us import a lot of things going on with the city of our storm drains and all those various different things, but this does get some of the most important piece, which is the water and wastewater infrastructure.
Yeah.
So, and then, and I love the idea that guys will have it on their screen, they'll have it today, you go out there. And then we're gonna have on a, on a computer, a desk at the front desk. So when our planner or one of the people were talking about these things, we can actually show that that's.
We got the address and the utility was coming.
Say you're for the utilities are, you're connecting and that sort of stuff.
Mayor, what page is it?
It's on page second.
It's just the second.
The second paddock.
Yes.
Page twenty-three.
Thank you.
But yeah, the, the other phases of this could be uh, in the planning too, with the topography of Depot Bay, the uh, um, highlight nature panels, there's all kinds of views for GIS stuff. And um, for tourist information.
And the city application, that's.
Emergency where, where sites are located, emergencies where to gather. All kinds of.
That's not what this is.
But we'll, this is just sewers, water and infrastructure.
Part of the problem that it's so money melt right now is they were in here today, found out that the current program that we're using, um, because it has not been, uh, the license that's been paid for for two year, two or three years.
Two years, yes.
The data, our data is, they don't have data.
They purged it.
Thankfully, the gentleman who put it together, worked the data together in two thousand nineteen, had it on his computer. So, but he needs to actually rebuild it to some extent and get it back loaded up in the software.
Yeah, that was my question, um. So did we, you know, it's just an oversight that we didn't pay the license fee or we weren't using it? Um, I guess it's water on the bridge now, but that's forty-eight five, it's a high amount to recover.
Yeah, I was during, it was during the COVID, we were told not to purchase anything.
Well, it's about ten thousand to recover, that hole is, the rest of it is to build up. Yeah, cause he originally quoted me about thirty-eight five, I think.
It's, I'm sorry. What did you just say? It says one time activity to rebuild and recover white data.
Then update the changes to the infrastructure since two thousand nineteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to uh, accept the procurement request of fifty-four cents. And it's sole source because these are the only people that have access to that data, huh?
Right, they're the ones who created it, so we would cost, it would cost us twice as much if they had to recreate what they did.
Yes.
Well, I, I was looking at the procurement policy, if, if, if we do that, we just need to make sure we document why it is sole source or things like that.
Well, that's why I put this together. It's not necessarily a sole source as much as a good direct procurement out of the purchase vehicles. Which under a hundred thousand, you could do direct procurement.
Without free bids, I believe.
Yes.
Okay.
You just have to justify why they didn't. They're not, this company isn't the, sole source means that the only ones they can do it. They are not the only ones that can do it. Their best use, best source because of their big background experience and that's why we're doing it.
We were gonna go back and see too if it was a phase one, I mean, the council backed in twenty nineteen approved the first phase. But fully known that we're gonna do a phase two, and then we got into the uh, problems with, well, COVID, everything checked out, and we were told at the time, oh, just fix whatever breaks and get material for process water and nothing else. We did that for seven years.
Thank you very much. So um, I move that we um, report this procurement request fifty-four, five for the, of course, GIS proposal.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the procurement request as submitted uh, for the GIS proposal. Any further discussion on the motion?
So, I just wanna understand this, this is uh, because we did not, we're having to pay this fee because we let this thing lapse?
Only ten thousand of this date. The rest of it is actually to update and.
So because we didn't pay a ten thousand dollar fee, we have to redo the whole thing?
Right. Yeah.
No.
No, not.
We didn't pay the yearly subscription and because we didn't pay the yearly subscription in two years, the company Esri, which does the, the, on the, the uh, this, this, they're the software company.
Yeah, the software companies. Yes.
They purged our info.
Also.
Which was something else, so we never got a notice that, yes, talking to um, the water path company that was here today, his name's Turi Anderson, he kind of explained why. And we're not alone, there's.
My understanding is that the council chose to during COVID, go to restricted, or or uh, what is it called, uh, very lean spending.
Essential spending.
Essential spending and at the point, the city required the time decided that this was not considered essential spending.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Okay, and as part of that, I forgot to tell you, as part of that five hundred dollars for the monthly, um, they're going to invoice me and if Brady isn't sending a lot of updates, they will, it won't be the five hundred dollars, they'll reduce it. Um, and I told them that I asked them to put that on the invoice, decide on a C, how much is being sent to them, so I can make sure that we're not overpaying, if you will, if we're not sending a lot of updates. Like depending on what the hills does, but you know, depending on what other we get, so uh, so you'll see that when you approve invoices and know whether or not we're hitting that target. But if we do a lot of building, we might, in a month, we might go over a little bit, but we'll know before we do it.
So one, I'm sorry, one more question, is this, is this gonna be on top of a property tax map?
Um, it, it's off our Google Earth, um, but it doesn't note the, I can show you some samples, but um, it's, it notarizes the roads, the streets.
There will be some overlap.
And buildings.
Right, from the, like, I can't, from the district office, because they have to have a look back on our city. But then they'll create their own infrastructure layers. So, but if we can, we, so if we know where the tax laws are, that would be much helpful.
That's, that's part of that second phase for the, for the planning, um, we'll be able to integrate all that.
Okay, thank you.
And it, that's, we're, we're trying to follow the path that the city is, is using, it's really, they're very happy with it. We talked to their um, city manager. He's, he's, yeah, it works great, but they went through the same thing during their, uh, lean years in twenty-one. Same, same over.
Alrighty, um, Kim, do you wanna give us an update on the Gregerson property?
Real short and sweet, um, our city attorney, as requested, reached out to the family and they're not interested in splitting the property yet. They wanna sell it as a whole piece and they're definitely, we're not gonna buy the second piece, they don't wanna do a constipation piece. So, uh, the council can talk about this on another day, discuss it, what do you, or just, we're done.
Uh, Mayor, uh, along that line, don't we have to have, is that access road, is that part of the Gregerson property? That, that, that it goes along?
It's already been, in easement, we've already taken.
Okay, we've got an easement there, alright.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Do we not have to get a special, didn't the last time they, they dredge the?
It's all done, the easement is there.
So the easement is permanent, we asked for a permanent easement to allow for dredging of the check out?
Yes.
Right, any further?
Right. Egress and airgress.
So, shall we just take this up a, a little time?
Okay.
Uh, project update, harbor dock replacement.
Um, so I gave you, I think I gave you the report, so I guess my question is to you, do you want these reports? There's gonna be a lot of them as the project, he's gonna be doing a lot of observations. Um, and I don't know if you just want us to pop these things up on the website and you can look at them as you will, or do you want me to continue filling up your packets with these observations?
My, my opinion, just head on the website.
Okay.
That's what I was. I would let us know when, I have the city report.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're. Well, you could let us know when your reports are.
I can do that.
You're talking about the AKS job.
Uh, PND.
Your, your restoration.
The PND observation report when they go out and do inspection of the pier or the docks and the manufacturing?
Okay, what page is that?
Okay, I, I got that. Yeah, I thought you did.
What, what page is that? About one forty-nine? Is where it starts, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Michelle, I didn't, I thought I had it up, I dropped it.
Well, you know, I, I just glanced at that and I thought it was interesting. I think I'll put more time in on this, does everybody feel like that's interesting stuff that you wanna see?
I don't think it has been in the package, I think it's gonna be online and she'll just let us know.
Okay, I can definitely do that.
As, as far as.
This was kind of interesting, cause to know that they've gone out and verified the things that they can, that's incredible.
It's awesome.
Yeah, see, not just.
It's awesome.
Yeah, the reason I asked it, I don't.
That's the doff key.
They're on top of it, yeah.
Yes, they are on top of it.
Well, people are always asking me, you know, what's going on.
Yeah, so if it's on the website, that would be great if you had placed it.
Yeah, everything is on the website anyway, the project update, report, the schedule, everything is there, we'll just start posting these as well.
So, what is it under?
Um, harbor docks two, four, the project under the harbor.
Uh, drinking water and source protection spending program.
Um, this, I think I put all of this in the project updates.
Yeah, it is.
Um. But I didn't. Anyway, um, I'm gonna pass that, I think I put this all in the, the project, so we have recently, and I, I don't like, I, I can't remember who I told and who I've been told. We recently received two, um, one grant and some technical, free technical assistance for the watershed, Council Rec, you know, we have this for the watershed, so remember when um, Laura and we can put together the letter of interest for the drinking watershed protection that everybody, you didn't approve? Well, we got that seventy thousand grant that we were top three, um, and got the seventy thousand, that will help us. And I spit, I spoke to Daniel today and we had to tweak it a little bit because of the EPA's worry about. And they will help us formulate a plan and look at the funding sources to protect our watersheds. One of the exciting things about it is it includes not just Murphy Bay, it includes Rocky Creek, which, you know, we think is really important. So that's the seventy thousand, I haven't gotten a contract on it yet, which is why you haven't seen it yet, but I got the notification and the award and everything. The second thing is, is we submitted for that, remember we came and said we were gonna do that EPA pilot program? Um, Laura came to talk to us about that, we got that as well. And um, we've been working with Sustainable in Request, um, Fran and I attended some discussion with him and they're working and I. That scope of work task list I provided is what he's working on to um, get EPA's approval. Once that happens, he'll be working with us on some aspects as well. And then they bill EPA directly, it's not even a pass group, it just, they do these tasks, EPA approves these tasks. And then they help us to do it. Daniel and I were talking today and because these two programs are really closely related to watershed protection, EPA was worried about their, like, double living, if you will, and. And so the strategy is that the seventy thousand, which is more robust bucket, will do things like handle the plant and, and how to figure out the conservation plan. And the, uh, Sustainable Northwest will work on a different aspect of it, um, which will fit more in their scope, so that the the money and the plans complement each other and not overlap, so we're getting more for what we're doing. Um, a consultant like Sustainable Northwest, the project task that you can range from anywhere to seventy to, uh, thirty to fifty thousand, so, you know, in essence, we got close to what feels like about a hundred thousand, um, of free assistance, if you will, to help us with our, um, watershed, both Rocky Creek and North Depot Bay Creek, so, um, I'm real excited about that, so. It's always good to, to hear that we win something instead of things always taking the money away from us, so. So that's why I wanted to talk about that, and the sub award, the task list is what they have been working on for us. Come on with that, yeah. I think that's it.
If I could say, Mayor, uh, there were a couple of things on this task list that caught my eye, Kim. Uh, one is, uh, this, uh, land acquisition, technical assistance, help develop a strategic plan for conservation of the North Depot Bay and Rocky Creek watersheds. I, I couldn't be more for that, I gotta tell you, I, I really like that idea. But, uh, it says land acquisition, technical assistance, and then over here on task four, um, it goes right into, you know, actually purchasing, proposing to purchase that land. And one idea that I think I'm trying to get across to, uh, to this, to, to this, impart to this plan here, as well as others, is can we get the job done without spending a lot of money that we don't have? Uh, I'm concerned about buying this property when we could, uh, negotiate with the landlords now to protect it. For example, uh, the silt problem. Uh, you know, we have to work with these people and with our legislature to make sure there are laws in place to prevent this kind of erosion from occurring. And I think, and I think there probably are lots here.
Yeah, they're ignoring, so.
Well, then, then that doesn't mean we have to buy the property, that means we have to crack down on the violations of law.
Right, and part of this isn't about buying the property, it's about discovering, possibly, maybe it is land acquisition, but it's to review what we do, what are our strategies? Remember Laura said it could be a combination of strategies?
Right.
Like you had suggested, it doesn't have, well, see, that's what this group, these two groups are gonna help us figure out, what is our strategy? And maybe it's land acquisition, maybe it's conservation easements, maybe it's working with the timber companies, um, it's, that's what they'll help figure out. I see, cause we don't really have any one person that's able to do this for us.
They're just giving us guidance.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have to go from there.
Well, and then, and then, um, the Oregon watershed enhancement board, DEQ, worked with the legislature, it's just on a tour with Senator Anderson. And he and his counterpart down in, uh, Cruz County helped move this package together, everybody's concerned about protecting their watersheds. And they have, they got five million dollars from the legislature for the first round to help communities acquire easements or land in their watersheds. And Reedport has like a three hundred thirty acre parcel they're trying to submit for this first round of funding. And, um, so that was the one time five million dollar from the legislature into the budget for drinking water watershed protection effort, so it's a huge deal, and, um, and I don't think we can work fast enough to get anything, you know, applied for any grants for foreign easements or property this, but next round if they put more money in, it's great.
Yeah, interesting.
So I was just, I was shocked to see Senator Anderson, but he showed up and was, you know, he's just, he's in the school in the creek watershed that provides, I think, city water, and they're trying to acquire theirs because you know, it's just, it's too scary to have to, not in control of the watershed.
Okay, are there, um, any closing public comments this evening? Ben, okay, council comments? Bill, do you have council comments this evening?
Not tonight.
No? I don't care. No? Counselor?
Well, I was gonna say something, but because everybody has passed, I'm gonna pass.
Okay. And, here? Counsel comments, counselor?
Thank you.
No, okay, okay.
Alrighty, we are adjourned, Ben.
Thank you.
Bye.
Good night. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
I think the difference, uh, having, um, generally, it's nice to see you again.
I will remember you next time.
Sure.
He's like, I'm not gonna bet on it.
We're gonna change it to Hyvolberg, we need to put our, uh, one way.
One way, science says no way.
Oh, you guys did?
Well, he must have.
Oh.
I did, I'm trying to follow.
There you go. You were right.
I remember.